Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have kind of an interesting meeting tonight, so we'll head right into it. Yes, oh, I'm very surprised.
I respectfully request that we take the executive session out of order to accommodate town council's time and her long commute home in the inclement weather.
All right, I don't know if everyone heard that request, and I can always blame Ellen now, but it's really, I knew this was coming. We're going to move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the litigation because an open meeting may have a determinate detrimental effect on the litigation position of this body. We're going to do a roll call, vote, and I promise you, this will be very quick. So.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will be right back.
Jeff, I thought you were going to ask us to stand outside the range.
Thank you for waiting. Board and committee reports, none. Citizens' concerns, hearing, none. Public hearings, seeing, none. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Jeff.
I've skipped Tracy the last three times.
I just wanted to let the board know that we have executed a contract with Beta Engineering for our road improvement program. We got approval at town meeting for the appropriation for this back in May, and basically it's going to create a pavement management program that will reflect the current pavement conditions, identify town-owned versus private ways versus, you know, whatever else we may have shared driveways. And it's also going to provide a tool for developing a prioritized capital plan. So that's been a long time in the making. We did receive notification from the Division of Marine Fisheries that they are terminating our contract for the Great Marsh Green Crab depletion program. That was a contract in the amount of $15,600. Any obligations that were incurred up to November 23rd will be honored. That's part of the Governor's Nine C cuts, so just so you're aware of that. I also did receive a letter from Essex National Heritage thanking Chairman Walker for sharing his enthusiasm as a guest speaker at their annual meeting at the Governor's Academy, so they were very excited about that. Let you know that the Friends of the Newbury Town Library will be holding their annual cookie swap on December 20th from 11 to 1:00. And in terms of updates, I did receive notification from Senator Tyre's office that Senate Bill 2178 was enacted. That was the act allowing certain senior support staff members of Protection Fire Company Number One in Byfield to continue to serve beyond the age of 65. So that did pass, and the governor did sign it. And just in terms of a brief Plum Island update, I want to let you know that the Center Island Groin is becoming more exposed. Doug Packer, the Conservation Agent, and the Chief and the Deputy Chief have been out there periodically with Sam Jocelyn as well. They notified me that considerable volume has been lost. The Dartmouth area is still an area of great concern, and EMA will continue to monitor the situation throughout the high tide cycles over the next couple of days, so I'll keep you posted.
And that depletion of sand is because of this storm?
Last couple of days.
Couple of days, all right. Thank you very much, Tracy. Frank, you're here?
Yes.
The Merrimack River Feline Rescue Society has a couple requests. The first request, do you have it on your page too, Frank? Because I'll let you ask it.
What we have is, we're doing our third strut for strays. We're asking to do our third strut for strays in Newbury. We used to hold them in Newbury Port. We changed over three years ago. And the first request is to have our strut and our run. It's a three-mile run and a three-mile walk. And we also, when we start at the green, the walk and the run this year are the same route, where last year we did two different routes. We'll be starting right at the upper green, crossing Hanover, staying on green. We'll take a right on Boston. We'll turn around just before the train tracks and reverse our route back to the upper green for both the run and the walk. May 31st, I have it down on the form nine to four, but that's kind of set up and break down, clean up, I'd be out of there. It's really about 10 to 2, but we allowed for setup and, you know, all that sort. The second request is to, again, put a banner on the backstop at the green the week prior.
Thank you very much, Frank. And there's police notification and fire notification on those, so Frank's done a good job. Chuck?
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
See you later. Martha, you've got, where's Martha? You've got some of this stuff. What it is right here, is Michael here?
Yeah.
Mike's here too. Michael Hulahan is involved in Rooster Wings. He's the owner. It's yoga, and he is looking to proceed to build a facility on Route 1, and he's been doing a tremendous amount of work and due diligence. And part of his eureka one morning was, or at least ours, of course, was that it's in the water protection district. Is it in the water protection first layer, you know, whatever? You're in that district. So, that being said, you will have to petition us, and there's a joint meeting with the planning board for, why don't you go and explain it totally then, Martha?
Yeah, the project is triggering a couple of things. One is it is in the Water Supply Protection District. The address is 76 Newbury Port Turnpike, and Mike is looking to build a, you know, yoga and healing center moving from Byfield. It's a little over 5,000 square feet. And so it's in the Water Supply Protection District, so that will require a special permit from the selectmen, and also requires site plan review. He submitted the site plan review application to the planning board last week, and the board would like to suggest to expedite the project that we hold a joint public hearing with the Board of Selectmen, and the board voted on two potential dates. One would be the first Wednesday in January, which would be the regular first planning board meeting, and the other would be the second Tuesday in January, which would be the selectmen's meeting. So whichever the board would prefer, if you are willing to, to hold the joint public hearing, which is what we've done in the past for North Reading Transportation and also Harmony, which was Playmakers.
And we're going to get material?
Yes, and I've got, I can give you the application packages right now, individual ones for you. I will give the rest to Ellen, and I'll coordinate distribution with her for review. We are getting a review engineer. There's storm, the project involves stormwater management, among other things, and we are getting a peer review engineer to review the stormwater, septic, the site layout, and all that kind of stuff. So that review will serve for, you know, both applications.
Great. Would you like a motion for us to choose the date then? Is that what you're looking for tonight?
Two, two motions, please. One would be to accept the special permit application for Roots to Wings, and the second would be to, to vote on a date for the public hearing, and then I will put together the legal notice.
Once again, it was Wednesday, what, and?
It's January 1st, right? First Wednesday in January.
First Wednesday in January, or the second Tuesday. All right, no, thanks, Martha. That was very, very good. Great. Certainly going to be, hopefully, an asset to the town, and Mike's worked very hard on it. So, that being said.
Motion to.
For a motion, let's do the date first.
If you could move to accept the application.
First, all right. I would like a motion to accept the application for Roots to Wings for a special permit.
Motion to accept the application?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll do the date. Motion?
The fifth would be the first Tuesday, right, at our selectmen's meeting?
So you mean second Tuesday?
It's the second Tuesday, so it would be the Tuesday after that.
Right. A normal Tuesday.
Your normal Tuesday meeting.
Regular hearing during that?
Yep.
Yeah, motion to have.
Any other hearings? When is the?
Have you got a calendar? No, that's all right. Who's got a calendar out there?
Well, let it know.
Second, second Tuesday.
When did Main Street move to?
13th.
Okay.
When did Main Street move to?
All right, so that motion.
Didn't they move that to January?
What's that?
That's a very ago.
Is this going to bump into theirs?
January 27th.
Okay, all right.
Two weeks after.
Thank you.
I remember that.
I moved to have the public hearing on the 13th of January at 7:30 PM. Second.
Any discussion?
I will not be here on the first Wednesday. I'll be in Arizona, so we won't have a quorum, so we, if we have to have a joint meeting, we can't do it unless Mike is able to attend.
Is that, is that a, is that a three, a majority? Or what do we?
It'll be a supermajority. It's a special permit, right.
Oh, dear.
So we can't do it on that Wednesday?
Yes, and you could watch the, watch the video and certify that you've done that.
I'll be home by the second one, second meeting date, which is why I proposed the Tuesday.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mike's here. If you want a brief overview of the project, otherwise you'll get a full presentation.
You're on TV. You want to fill us in? Come on. Go ahead. Go to the microphone, Mike. Kind of put you on the spot, right?
Just kind of, you know, give us what you are doing now, the services you're providing, and how forward, you know, your vision for what you have.
So we've owned and operated, my wife and I have owned and operated Roots to Wings Yoga and Healing since 2009. It's on Lund Street across from the library today, and there's been a yoga studio there since 2004. And we service adults and children. We offer about 20 classes a week right now for adults and children. By 2019, once we build the building, it'll be a two-story, two-and-a-half-story building, and then there'll be a couple rentals for complimentary use, like medical or healing, something like that on the side, so maybe we can afford to build a building that big. And we'll service probably, I would estimate, about 70 customers a day from 6:00 in the morning to 9:30 at night.
Fantastic.
Great.
For the record, I've heard nothing but good. For the record, I've heard nothing but good.
Next on the agenda is, and John is here tonight, we have before us, are in our packet, the proposed and revised Conservation Commission Stormwater Regulations. It is for our review and comment, right, John?
That's correct.
And then maybe accept at our next meeting?
There will be a public hearing sometime in the next couple of months for both in the subdivision rules and regulations. But at this point, it would be whatever comments, me out there?
Yeah. Start again.
The pressure is front and center.
Start again if you can.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we would like your comments, individually, collectively, whether you take a vote on them is your call. I don't much care, but I do want to hear what every one of the selectmen have to say. We've put it out to just about every responsible individual in town government for their comments. We obviously need a legal review from Ginny, and comments are you.
And of course, this was the mandate from the state that these had to be done?
Right. This is the EPA mandate that we have to have one, and this was done, oh, probably about four years ago initially, and this is a revision, a sort of an update.
Super. Thanks for all your hard work.
We're still ahead of the curve, right?
Say again?
We're still ahead of the curve.
I believe we are, yeah. I piously hope we are.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I can put my hand on the next item. It's the final review and approve and sign the warrant for the special election, which will be on February 10th, 2015. So I have open to it, and we have the guidelines in front of us for that. Now, Tracy, exactly what are we asking as a motion?
Ellen's got the paperwork.
Okay. Me, I have it in front of me too, but, okay, and that's, all right, and you're looking for signatures on this as it stands?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, looking again at what I have in front of me, we have the format that is the warrant that we have to take and sign tonight. We need a motion to accept what's in front of us, that's in your packet. The name of the Commonwealth Massachusetts, you hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Newbury, qualified to vote in town affairs and to meet in our respective voting districts at February 10th, 2015, to vote on the following positions of selectmen, unexpired term. So, I entertain a motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve is writ.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All of those in, yeah, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Let me see it, now sign it.
We'll sign it as we go through it. Next, we have, we have business renewals, and there's quite a few of them. And I think why we'll get to this after is, if you folks can look in your packet, I will probably read these and go through all the ones that are there, and you can be looking at them and maybe be looking at some of what's written under them, Chuck, when you get inside, and see if you have any problems with that. And then we also have some liquor license renewals, so I'll go through them very quickly. We'll, you know, we'll vote to accept all of them as license renewals at the end of my reading, and if you have any that you would like to hold, just say hold.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so if you're looking at Prime Energy at 17 Central Street, Barry Davis, BD Automotive, 24 Middle Road, Gilfords Packet Store, Mr. Mo's, 14 Plum Island, Little River Realty Trust, 7 Newbury, if I skip one, let me know, Mad Martha's Cafe, 15 Northern Boulevard, 51 Northern Boulevard, Nice, that's dyslexia, huh? Nice's Auto Service, 1 Nice Lane, Old Newbury Golf Course, David Williams, Plum Island Enterprise, parking lot, 34 Plum Island Boulevard, Williams, David Williams again, parking lot, 3 Nolan Boulevard, Molten Riverfront Marine, 292 High Road, Lanier, The Sanctuary Bed and Breakfast, 75 Scotland Road, John Siemens, DB Sculpture by Beverly Siemens, 2 Newman Road, Walton's Auto Lab, 74 Hanover Street, 78 Gerald Doherty, Wheelhouse Parking, 49 Northern Boulevard, Ronnie Barrett, Plum Island Taxpayers, 8 Plum Island, Andrew Haley, Parker River Marine Services LLC, 7 Newbury Neck Road. If, if you're all in agreement of those as stated, then I'll take a motion to accept the business renewals.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve all.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then I would head right into the list of liquor license renewals as follows. Once again, if I skip one, let me know, or if I say the address incorrectly. Parker River, Inc., which is the Parker River Pub and Grill at 9 Fruit Street, Old Town Country Club, Marsh Ave, Perotine Beverages, as Connor Cupboard, 4 Hanover Street, Wow, Savanovich, Family Associates, DBAJ Liquors, 53 Main Street, Robert C. Doucette, Dick's Variety, 29 Plum Island, Gilfords Packet Store, once again, Mr. Mo's, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, Wayne Alta Villa, Jr., BGS Variety, 6D Fruit Street, Plum Island Grill, DB Plum Island Grill, 2 Plum Island Boulevard, The Butchery, Inc., DB Newbury Butchery, 2 Morgan Ave, Old Newbury Golf Club, DB Old Newbury Golf Club, 319 Newbury Turnpike, Plum Island Beach Coma, once again, DBA Plum Island Beach Coma, 23 Plum Island Boulevard, World Spirits, Inc., which is Plum Crazy at 134 Northern Boulevard. Seeing and hearing all those, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right behind that, we have a.
The renewal certificate?
Yeah, hold on for a second. How is it stated? We have, too many tabs, from the ABCC, Alcoholic Drivers Control Commission. It seems that because we have this meeting on the 7/9th, we have to ask for approval as a motion to accept what they have written in front of me, which is to ask us, as the Board of Selectmen, as the ABCC, has Newbury had any change or increase in resident population? And as of July 10th, 2015, there will be no change. So we have to make a motion, Tracy, to accept and send this to them. Ellen?
Well, the first thing was the renewal certification, and that was just stating that you would, that there were no changes in the license numbers, that there were no licensees who failed to renew, and then there were none disapproved by the board.
All right, so that's the page before.
Yeah.
All right. So, motion for, I need a motion from you guys that'll state that we have none that have failed to renew, and that none were disapproved?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And what's the second part of it?
The second part of it was just stating that the, the estimate resident population pretty much remains the same.
Now, do we need a motion on that? Or we're just going to sign it?
Yeah, just sign it.
So, all right, motion to sign. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That being said, we have a joint meeting. Eric, do you want to start it? How would you like to go about it?
Before we commence, I'd just like to ask everyone who's speaking at the meeting to approach a microphone before giving comments, so that everyone can hear clearly this time.
Could they give their names, please?
Yep.
Eric Svan, 14 Old Farm Way, Shared Municipal Building Committee. So last, we had a joint meeting. I think it was a successful meeting, and we all found consensus, which is good, and there were three options that came out of that, new facility here on this property. And then we were charged or thought we would look at two other options, and they would both, they would be at either end of Route 1, one being the Governor's site, in which the Governor's Academy had offered to donate a piece of property, about 3.3 acres, which was on the northern part of their property on Route 1. And the reason that site was looked at is because there is a Byfield water system close by. There is also on Governor's property, they have their own sewer system treatment plant. So, we did, looked at that, Tracy made some calls. We were trying to have a meeting, and meeting really didn't happen, but I think we gained some information. And then the second option was to look at Northern Route 1, and with looking at Northern Route 1, the JMR disposal facility site came up, and the reason that site came up is because we thought what would be the closest public water supply would be from Newbury Port, coming from the traffic circle down, and the same thing with a sewer line. So, and then with that, at the end of the meeting, the other item was about parking. So I'll get on to, in looking at, I'll go back to the other two sites. I think the idea is that in terms of a budget, the budget that I've put together has re, reordered the budget by taking the project day here, which in total, for 5,431 square feet of a new town hall, and 9,000 square feet of a police station, for a cost of $7,131,800. Then what I looked at was, how do I take the other two sites and compare them back to that as a base cost? Kathleen Pearson did a study of the use of the water calculation, and of using that water calculation, came up with a number for sewer costs for the three sites. I then met with Jamie, what was his last name?
Tucalo.
Tucalo, over at, Tucalo? Over in Newbury Port, and had a discussion with him, not about a deal to get the water here, but just, could you help educate me on water pipes, sewer pipes, force main pump stations, so that I could accurately reflect some pricing and take the information that Kathleen had put together, and put these, put these budgets together. So, looking at the Governor's site, you know, the idea there is that the property is free, it would be a lease option, and we would have to connect back to their, call it a sewer system. The unknowns currently still are, the Governor's Academy has plans for development, and they themselves haven't figured out exactly what their capacity and their future options are. And if we were to build on that site, there are some unknowns about going forward, and if they wanted to expand and they needed to improve their facility, then we would be into shared cost for upgrade, and would we be, we really wouldn't be upgrading the sewer for the sake of the new facility for the town. We would be buying in so that they could improve their facility, so they could continue to do what they want. That didn't seem like the best intentions to get the town into. There's also extending, and I don't have all the, guess I could dig up the numbers, but a couple hundred feet of water and sewer line, the Governor's site is an additional $1,120,000, top of the base number I gave you here. So then we went to Route 1 North, and on that site, took the distances from Kathleen's good work, and the cost there for just getting the water and sewer to the JMR site is 1.2 million. So, and the 7.1 million that I mentioned for the base project also does not have the current sewer connection for the town hall now. That's in process and underway, and however or wherever the police station goes, that that process has its own timeline and needs to be solved in order to keep this facility operational. That's, so that's where the 7.1, if someone heard, be, say, about eight or just about eight previous meetings, that's why it's now at 7.1. So, and the understanding and the pushback and the feedback has been cost, you know, cost, cost. People, you know, we have a program, we have tried to present the best intentions. We also had a, since October 28th, we had a polling day in town, and so we presented to one, basically a poster, a 24 by 36 board, that basically just said that there's facility issues in town. Municipal Building Committee is looking at it, and if you'd like to get involved, here are the committee members. We then announced, and through some good work, Erica getting out an email, also getting an ad in the Daily News, so thank you, Jen, for that, for just an announcement, held a public work, an open public workshop right here, was, you know, live on air, and it was also taped, and so if anybody would like to take what the full presentation of the sites, what was made, certainly send that out to anybody that's inquiring about what, or anybody that's going to watch this live now, or wants to share this with anybody, there is a whole presentation that you can watch, and you can go to the town website, and on the front page, or even on the Municipal Building Committee Department page, there's a link to the YouTube video, so watch it. It's the complete report. I'm trying to skim a little bit through this since we've been through it. I'm trying to skim a little bit through this since we've been through it. There's a lot of good people here that were at that meeting. It was a little disappointing, but not disheartening that a lot of the public didn't show up. It was live, but I wish people would take more of an interest in their own, um, town services and, and functions. So, with that, we also asked CSS Architects, that's put together the plan that we've seen for this site. They also put together the previous plan for the Public Safety Complex Committee, and we asked them about more parking spaces. So that was one of the biggest issues that came out of October twenty-eighth. So currently, the town hall and the police department share thirty parking spaces for both departments. Zoning requires one parking space per four hundred gross square feet for the civic administration portion of the building, which is the town hall, and requires one parking space per staff on the lar- largest shift, plus two parking spaces per each official vehicle. So, the total number of spaces required by zoning is thirty-four. We currently have thirty parking spaces here at town hall, so we're slightly deficient. The new plan, which was, um, shuffled a few more parking spaces along the side, came up with forty-five parking spaces. Now that's the previous plan we had, plus a little maneuvering, at, that total adds up to forty-five. I think we were somewhere, um, Sam, help me, maybe around thirty-seven, thirty-eight last time?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine spaces, so, um, six spaces more were found by doing that. Then, there was also a plan that said you could get ten more spaces if you put parking underneath the town hall portion of the new building. Previously, the town hall had a first floor and a second floor. The police department had a small, lower level, a first floor and a second floor. Basically, any kind of structured parking is expensive. If it's done most economically, it, uh, nine to ten spaces might add, I would say sixty is the number they're giving me, I would think it might be just a little bit more, but more spaces could be found for premium on the site. Good news is, is that we would, um, we would come up with forty-five spaces on the plan. So, I think the parking issue from October twenty-eighth is answered. So with that, I think the, you know, the next step forward is, um, you know, if we, if we, if, from what the feedback that I've been hearing, and I think the, well, and from everybody here, is that, you know, cost is an issue. Now, if we take the town hall option of a new police department and town hall here, and I'm gonna say the, the, the option on that, and thinking hard of how could we save more money, and what, what would it mean, is if you, I think the only way really to, to lessen the cost, not cheapen what we're doing, but lessen the cost of the project, is somehow, is if you were to renovate the existing town hall, and build a new police station, I don't know, next door, just down the street somewhere. But the buildings are separate, and it allows you to reuse the town hall. By the time I take the savings for what needs to be done here, it's still basically the same cost, and a little bit more, to build a new separate police station, because you no longer have shared lobby, shared elevator, which provides accessibility for the floors. And so I approximate that you would save about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars if town hall was renovated right here, and the new police station was built somewhere else. So the values of, uh, operational synergies, or, or having, uh, one building, one mechanical system, one elevator, one set of exits, in a more efficient building size. I did also take a sketch, and if people remember the, or go back to and look at the Public Safety Complex Committee that we had built for the fire station, if you just took off the apparatus bay, you would have about a nine thousand square foot, single-story building on that site. So if somebody wants to size up what's that mean about keeping town hall and building a new police station, um, the square footage goes up, because the, the idea would be, you would renovate this building, you'd renovate downstairs. Only the front along Morgan Ave would become some offices for the Inspectual Service Department. There's still some program that is needed and a small addition, and the rest of the basement space back in that area could be used for storage, for record storage. So that's where the Municipal Building Committee currently is, and I think what we'd, we'd like to figure out is if the cost differences for the governors and the Route One North site, um, if we're all in agreement that, you know, adding to the, to the base cost is not where we wanna go or spend our time and pursue. And if we should focus here on this site with a new building for Police Station Town Hall, and, you know, we could possibly look at, at how the, how in this immediate area right here, something else could be done as a secondary option, but the focus would be to try to consolidate the plans and the idea and the program and the costs for right here.
Eric, thank you, thank you very much. I called on you very quickly, and I knew you had to kinda move, um, but you did a really great job. I would like to say that tonight is the joint meeting, and we do have the Municipal Building Committee here, the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, uh, and the Planning Board, so, um, if we're looking for a timeline, was this the meeting that we were thinking of trying to come up with at least the selectments, or some sort of joint idea of which site we were gonna choose? What was the next date if we accomplished that tonight that we were shooting for? Can you remember, Eric, without looking at your other schedule? What was next, Tracy, can you remember?
Choosing a location tonight, so...
What's next if we did it tonight?
The next phase is for us to go into design.
Alright.
Into the design phase in the, in the spring.
When do we have to, uh, we have to go to town meeting to appropriate those monies? Alright. Eric did a really nice presentation, and I think we ought to have an open discussion among everyone here tonight. One thing that does add, and Eric alluded to it, which does add a little more flexibility in assessing this site. And I, I think it's, you know, really worth sharing with everyone. And Eric had some idea of this, that's why he started into some of his discussion of costs, and I think it still needs to be vetted out. But Protection Two has done some reconsideration, and they've thought about how they might help the town. And they did send a letter, "Dear Mr. Walker, Protection Two had a special meeting last night to discuss selling a piece of land to the town to help with the building of a new police station slash town hall. We understand there might be some site issues, and wanted to open the door to discussion to see if any of the land we own could be useful. Obviously, there is a lot to consider and more detail to be discussed, but we want to give the town another option as needed." So as I look at this, it actually more heavily weighs the value of this location, because if you think back to what we were gonna do originally, which were, we were charged to build a police station. So, as we started into the concept of a municipal building project, and then we've kind of gone back to maybe the synergy, which we decided at our meeting at the library of having, uh, the police station and town hall almost co-joined. But that would be on this location. So, if when we did our engineering and did our studies, there were some benefits to having a freestanding police station that was still within very close proximity and walking distance, and some of the synergy was still kept in place that we had discussed at that meeting in the library, I don't know if John and Mike, if freestanding, it would be a little bit bigger, could work with other police departments, I don't know if, but at least we would find out that as we went into more of the planning stage. Right, Eric?
Correct.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it adds another layer of opportunity for this location. And this is something that we looked at in the beginning, didn't we, Martha? This was something that was one of our original thoughts? And now it's back on the, on the table. So, that is something new. To me, it doesn't mean that it's an absolute viable alternative that we should just jump to do, but it certainly gives us two ways of looking at one site, which I think is really, really, really good. So, any thoughts, Eric?
With the information that we have, we would, um, seek evil, either from a local contractor or a professional estimator to take the program that we have on this site and, and run the numbers, so that we can get expanded numbers, but also prove the numbers that, you know, I've been presenting, because we're gonna need that, um, moving forward. At the same time, we'll have to, uh, it would be easier to select a site and figure the site with option one or two, and I think if, even if it is down the street, or, you know, we, we mentioned the neighbor, even if the neighbor's never been talked to, sorry if you're funny about this now, but we're just trying to figure out what, with this site, what is the next adjacent availabilities? And it's much easier to consider or think about that as one site, as opposed to sites that are here, there, and everywhere.
So in other words, what you just said is, this site might be thought of as just this location that town hall's on, but it really kinda mofs out to include what's been offered to us from the fire station, and anything that could be in its proximity?
People that still feel that just, um, the public should be presented two options, even if one is a sorry sister to the first one, or if they're equal twins, they should at least have two options to consider. And we certainly, as the Municipal Building Committer, will have the preferred option and state why it's the preferred option.
Why two?
Because people can't compare just one, just one option. People look at it, and they go, "What is this?" It could be the Taj Mahal, and they still don't get it. They need something else to see what the difference between the two are. You know, if I was a good salesman, I'd have three options. I'd have the terrible one, that was twenty million. And then I'd try to sell you the, the fifty million, because it's less, but it costs more. And then I'd say, "Look, I got this project at seven point one. It's got everything you want, and it's not like those other ones." But I think you need two, just to show and, and compare. And Municipal Building Committee also has to go through the program with, um, town hall and with the police department to say, you know, is this the, you know, we gotta try, we're gonna go back and do our program one more time?
Yep.
Our cost one more time.
Uh, can I just clarify, is that seven point one, that new estimate, include the temporary housing for the town offices?
Yes, there are, yes, there's, the difference between the three options basically fall into moving, temporary facilities, water connections, sewer connections, site cost. And I've tried to break those out for both separately, for the police department and for the town hall.
I mean, one thing is, you know, this person, meaning myself, when I looked at this simplistically, I had felt in the beginning, before sitting down with Eric at, at a Municipal Building Committee meeting, I felt that if we built a police station and put a relatively succinct but minimal addition on town hall, that we could maybe be cutting things relatively in half. You know, I think some of that will be kind of, uh, ground truth when we get to some of the engineering that could be coming forth. And Eric kind of really corrected me in saying there might not be tremendous savings. It might be two-thirds, a third, I mean, it might not, but it's certainly, I think it's great of the fire station to, to reach consensus and step forward with offering a piece of land. And it gives this location, I think, tonight, and, I mean, I'll try to ask the board if we think, and, and I'm gonna entertain all kinds of questions from the audience, I want your participation jointly. I mean, if we feel strongly enough to come out with the ability to make a choice tonight, we will. I'll ask for that motion a little later for sure, because of a timeline. But right now, Jen has a question, and I'd really like input from the, uh, from the folks that are sitting there. So Jen, go ahead.
Yeah, can you, can you tell us the date of that letter from the fire department? And also, what's the next step in that?
Say it again?
What's the next step in that process? Because they're not offering a hard amount of land and a hard number, so what's the next step?
That came in today.
Right.
I responded to their email asking them to notify us in writing of their intention to sell it, because I'm not completely familiar with their bylaws and what votes they're required to get. And one, and with that letter, to let us know how much they would, their asking price would be.
Can you tell how much they're willing to sell?
It's a, it's a separate parcel, I, I don't know the acreage off the top of my head.
Without giving you bad information?
Just over an acre.
Yeah, it's two parcels, adjacent to each other. Just over an acre, and you don't know the price yet?
No, we had done appraisals back a couple years ago, but then the company decided at that time that they weren't gonna move forward with the sale, so we'd have to enter into a contract for appraisals, and then we would bring it to town meeting for appropriation.
So that being said, if my board was trying to develop, if my board was trying to develop a motion tonight, how can you folks out there help our board develop that motion? Go ahead.
My name is Richard Paul.
Come to the microphone, please.
My name is Richard Paul, I'm on the Planning Board, a new member. This is a question for Eric. I looked over your financial analysis, options A, B, and C, and roughly, there's between B and C and A, it's roughly one point one to one point two million. And what I would like to know is, in the analysis for options B and C, do you take into account the fact that this whole facility would become available for sale, for rent, or perhaps for use by some other thing, or by some other municipal facility that would not occur with option A? In other words, are you really comparing apples to apples?
It's a good question. Uh, all the options except for one option vacate the property. So, all new here, town hall here, police station somewhere else. Town hall somewhere else, police station here, or move everything to a, a building in town in which this would be available. So, as, as part of the October twenty-eighth meeting, and part of the discussion that was, was presented, was, you know, and asking the, the Planning Board, um, in my own thoughts, where is the best location in town for the town hall? For police station, where is the perceived center of town hall? And I have been showing in the presentations, a circle with the center of town. The town forest just past the transfer station on, um, Boston Road was brought up. And basically, that town forest is almost exactly the center of town, if you just take the town and say, okay, on a map, the town is this wide, and I cut it down like that, and across. If you take the town hall, and you take the governor's site, and you take a circle, and you take the radius out to governors, the town hall and the governors are equally distant from the center of town. So, that being said, it seemed like with the existing and the notion that the town hall has been here, and we have an upper green, and this has been historically the center of the town government, that this would be a preferred site.
Eric, I think what he was asking is, in your cost analysis, was the price of selling this building after the buil, if we built the town hall somewhere else, included in the cost?
Yes, that's exactly right.
If you, if you built the police station and the town hall somewhere else?
Somewhere else, yeah, both, joint building.
Buy a piece of property somewhere else, you could get the same value for this piece of property. So it's a wash. And Newburyport, you know, the Route One JMR site sounded good. It sounded like, hey, this would be a step in the right direction. You could get a town hall out there, get other businesses out there, this is great. Newburyport is not gonna size the line or say anything to extend the water. They would graciously probably extend the water for a town hall and for a police department. Beyond that, you know, without saying it, they've said absolutely not. So, putting something out on Route One, on Northern Route One, isn't gonna champion, uh, commercial development down Route One.
Before...
Question?
Uh, we go too much further, could I ask our chief of police and our town administrator to speak to the idea of a separate police station separated by a few hundred yards, and how they feel that might affect their operations?
From my perspective, I think having it on the same location would be appropriate, but we haven't, um, you know, we haven't fully vetted that at this point in time, so I, I wouldn't have any objections to that.
Operationally, as long as we're in close proximity, um, it wouldn't be much of a difference, whether it's a single facility or... whether it's a single facility or facilities separated by a few hundred yards. So, really, we haven't had too many discussions on that, but just off, just shooting from the hip, operationally, I don't see too much of a difference. It's a short walk.
And I, and I think, I mean, to build upon what Damon asked, not only have we not completed negotiations for that piece of land, but certainly there could be minimal Martha with the well, issues there, and we'd have to do a 20-1-8 and some sort of pilot test. I mean, it, there's a, you know, this, so I mean, nothing's a given, it's just that it adds, when I thought about this gesture, it added a little more breadth of scope for this location that didn't exist for us before. Whether it's something that makes or breaks this location, that's for you to decide as an individual. So Eric?
In the numbers that I have now, the, the site for governors is free, you know, dollar lease for whatever. The JMR site was valued or had a valuation of about $300,000. We had another property owner on Sled Road, which is really not a road, it's a way. It's off of Boston Road and Route 1, and it connects it on a diagonal, right, as you go by the transfer station, and when the town forest didn't perk, and looking at their, if you donated 40 acres of property, by the time you got to the setbacks, Martha took a look at it, it comes down to 10, and then it's, it's a precariously long site. And extending water that farther down is about three to four times farther than the JMR site. Well, you know, we asked and replied, "We graciously accept the donation of your land," and the response that came back is, "Why don't we trade my land for the town hall property?" And we stopped right there.
Now, we've got some pretty sharp guys, and especially Fred, so Fred, you'll, you're first. Can you come to the microphone? Thanks. Guys and, guys and gals, sorry, Eric.
Yes, I just have a couple of quick questions. Fred Davis, you know, I'm thinking of the town library, and I'm thinking of the Perm Island sewer system, and I'm thinking we don't wanna make a mistake this time. There's a lot of mistakes made in those two particular projects, I believe. I'm wondering, in order to do this, the voters have to pass it, and money is kind of important. And my thoughts are, if you build a separate police station here, or wherever you could build it, somehow the police station definitely needs to be replaced. I'm not really sure how the town hall got tied up in this, and I wanna know if the town hall would have to be renovated simultaneously, at the same time, or is that something you look at down the line?
Now, I could have a tendency to be able to answer those things because, and I'm gonna, if I make a mistake, ask Eric to correct me. I think I can't answer your questions succinctly. If we did have a police station that was being built offsite, we could probably remain doing business like this while the police station was being built. After that was completed, it would seem to me that there would still have to be downstairs. There could be, you know, if we had sewer, there could be a lot of cleanup. There maybe could be some big windows. We could have record stores. You might have some space that could be redeemed downstairs. But it would also seem to me, by the scope and breadth of the trailers that exist behind this building, that we would need some sort of addition to town hall, if that was the way it seemed to go, Fred. Now, Eric, is there anything that I missed? Microphone, please.
So, yes, the, the value of considering an adjacent site and keeping the town hall here is that it can, even if, you know, it can reduce the budget a bit, and it can put the town hall renovations on a different path from the police station, so...
So do you have a cost of the individual police station built by itself?
I do, and, and all the numbers that I've been showing, and when I've presented it, and it's probably pretty hard when it's up on the screen, but I've always been looking at the police station as a cost, and the town hall as a cost, and adding them together, always thinking that it's one project, but it always could become two easily enough.
So what would the police station be?
The police station is 4.7 million.
So it's half of the cost.
And the town hall is 2.4 million. And if you, and that's for two, that's for a combined new facility. If you just renovate the town hall, you, and I think I went errant on the conservative side of being a little bit higher, but I think you could probably save $800,000 out of that number.
Sam, loud, loud.
Well, then, then the police station somewhere else becomes a little bit more expensive, because it's now a police station project over there, and you have to buy the land, and you have to connect the sewer and the water to it. So, you can save money here, you can add money to the police station, and the net savings isn't as great if I tell you that you save $800,000 by just renovating this building, but totally to solve both problems, you're only gonna save $365,000, is how I presented the numbers.
Eric, could you give us the number of square footage in trailer space that we have for both the police department and town hall currently?
I did, Damon, you were at the meeting.
Yes.
It's something like 1,400 square feet plus a new 700 square foot trailer.
So about 21...
2,100 square feet. And the first floor of this building, the gross square footage of the first floor that we're on is 3,200 square feet. The basement is slightly smaller.
So, yeah, you answered my question, but the question I wanted to ask this gentleman is, could both of them options be brought up at town, town meeting? Like a joint town hall police station or a separate police station?
We haven't voted on that yet, have we?
It's a good question. I don't know.
I'm just thinking, you know, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to do all this and not have it pass. I'm thinking if voters saw $8 million on one question, or $4 million on the other question.
Respectfully, the number would be four.
Eric, can you run up to?
Yeah.
And this is, this is important, what Eric is gonna say.
Yeah, if I'm understanding correctly, if the option wouldn't be a 4.7 or an 8 million, it, because if we moved the police station to another location, this building would still require significant renovations today, to mitigate the problems that are going on there and make that usable space, because that space is unused, is being used by the police department now, but if it was to be repurposed, it would need to be overhauled. So you'd still have those, those costs coming in, so there is no, it's not possible to just move the police out and not make any changes here.
But could we have them both on the ballot, is what I'm asking, as separate entities? Do they have to be one?
I think that you'd have two different, spare with me for a second, but I think it would be two different projects. You'd have one that would be the new combined facility on this plot, or option two could be a separate police station, town hall on this, but it would be a combined project. You couldn't pass just a standalone police station without funding the renovations here at the same time. I don't think so, because you wouldn't be able to use the building.
Oh, you would still have the trailer.
You'd still have the trailer issues, you'd still have the other pieces that wouldn't make this building up to what it needs to be, the compliance issues that would come from, you'd still have to be doing some work here.
So we couldn't just take a vote on building a new police station?
I don't.
We gotta get rid of the snakes.
Yeah, we still have to get rid of the snakes in the building, regardless of who's, who, regardless of what town employees are working here.
So that's not answering the question. You still can't...
I don't think it would be, you wouldn't be giving the town a, the solution that it needs to be choosing between. It's...
Well, I think that would be the voters' choice.
I don't think so. I think that's extremely irresponsible.
Yeah.
Because to leave a town hall in ADA non-compliance and present an option that looks cheap, but costs the town potentially a lot more in the end, is not a good option.
I think we'd end up going back, we'd end up with one issue, and would end up going back shortly thereafter.
So if the police move out and we build a separate facility, and they're now happily occupied in a brand-new facility, and nothing gets done downstairs, the issues will get worse.
And one thing, just remember...
Yeah, that's not responsible.
Just remember, as we go forward, I, I've known Fred a while, and I don't think Fred is asking these things in anything but good faith.
Right.
And I, I think, you know, what is gonna be proven, Fred, is that in some respects, the savings, at least is what Eric is presenting right now, and what Erica alluded to as we go forward, after we really head into engineering, I always thought there'd be half. Then I started to think, well, maybe there'll be 5 million, 3 million. But it might not be working out that you're saving a tremendous amount of money by refurbishing this structure to, like Damon just said, all the compliance necessities that are needed, with, and you would have to do that when you put the addition on, because that triggers a lot of this stuff, mass general law, in having a separate police station. The savings might not be initially what I thought they were, hopefully, and I think that's what you're alluding to, but that would be ground truth as we head into engineering.
And I also think that if we look ahead, like one of the issues we've seen with the library is that we funded the facility but didn't build the operating costs into the operating budget, so that the capital expense was outlaid, and we could, we paid for that. However, we don't have the services, we're not, we're not, so that's the added cost that needs over time, that if we did keep this facility, we'd have operating costs of two separate facilities, which might end up being more expensive, even though the initial building cost for a separate police station would be this, you know, for sake of argument right now, 4.7 million, that in the long term, we're gonna end up having a town that's spending more on operating costs to run the two separate facilities. So, showing that as a, as another part of the equation that has to get added in over time, is that what is it gonna generate if this building is going to require more ongoing maintenance, and we're also doing ongoing maintenance at a new facility? So that's where I think that it would be, we need to address both issues on a common path.
And if the option becomes available for a separate police station, then we have to work extra hard to do the right thing here, but do it at the right budget, and figure out how we can economize by saving what we have. But we do need to try to get the number down, and that's the goal, no matter what we do.
So the people can't be offered a separate police station? That's the question, that's the only question I wanna know.
We don't have any agreement or land that gives us the option right now to build a separate police station.
Eric, could you go up to the mic, please? I'm sorry.
So, we have the, the inklings of, of an idea, but we do not have an option right now, if we had to vote and we had to ask the public right now, to separate the police station for a project cost that is less. If the town wanted to vote and spend an extra million or two for a separate police station or a police station somewhere else, we can move forward. But the, the option of the least expensive facility cost right now is a combined facility right here. So that's, that's option number one. If the police station becomes available and we can figure out how to get that savings back up, but maybe there's, the cost is only about 500,000, and I'm, I'm looking to prove, you know, my numbers out.
Well, the reason why I'm asking you these questions is because, you know, I don't want any animosity here. I'm asking it because a lot of people in my field wanna know why you can't just build a complete, a police station. I'm just asking a simple question, that's all, why you couldn't vote on it separately. And if you can't, you can't, I'll just tell you.
You know what, Fred, I think it's almost too early for us to give you that total answer.
Well, it's just some feedback, you know, nobody comes to meetings.
I think we're open, we're open to all options, right or wrong, no? I saw, no?
I'm sorry.
There's no legal, when you looked into a little bit of, of an option or a choice, I mean, it became, there was a little legal...
It's problematic to have two separate proposals presented on an override, because there's always the potential for both of them passing, and then it becomes much more difficult. I, I think at the time, when we go to the ballot, you have to have a single initiative moving forward. However, there's nothing to say that that initiative can't be to only build the police station, but then you haven't addressed any of the issues that we have at town hall, and the fact that our records are over at the transfer station, and our inspectional services are out in the trailers with our police department, and the other issues that the building inspector has identified. So, we were hoping to address all of them in a single project.
So, to answer your question somewhat, and I think Larry always has a different way of looking at things, so I'm looking forward to hearing from Larry. We probably would not wanna just build a police station and not looking, you know, to doing something pretty substantial also at town hall. So, Larry?
My name is Larry Gay. I'm the chairman of the Newbury Capital Planning Committee, and I believe this evening, with the letter you received from the Protection Fire Company Number Two, is a significant deal changer in the whole project, because that gives, provides us an opportunity to consider that. Capital planning will be aggressively involved with this project, and I think we have to fast-track, for the sake of town meeting, the full analysis of the two options, or the three options that were discussed. Centralizing or building a police station on a piece of land that the Newbury Fire Department has agreed to sell to us, and look at it in, in both ways, and come up with the best feasible opportunity for the town, and make the consensus decision of what is best for the town. Options are always options, but I think we have to get the information, the cost of the land. We have to look at any other tangential expenses that we may incur on that lot, we don't know it. We also are concerned that we're going to spend a substantial amount of monies to bring water, sewerage, not water, to the town hall, and that is an ongoing project that will be in front of town meeting. If that line can be extended down Morgan Avenue to the, a potentially new police station, that would significantly fix that problem of having water and sewerage there. So I think that we have some significant work to do, and I think the question of what we present or recommend to the town at town meeting in May will be a sum total of all those inputs that we will get.
And I think that's what I meant to say, Fred. So, Larry, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, there are two things, we've been focusing a lot on money, and money is certainly an important factor, certainly for capital planning and for the town as a whole, but I think we also have to look at how this building will function, what it does for the town, and how it will affect the town governance and functionality by moving out of town hall? Should we choose to do that, or renovate town hall? All of those things, I think, are also a significant factor in this decision-making. To just say, "We're going to get the cheapest building we possibly can," I think is short-selling the future residents of our town. So I wanna encourage everyone to think about what is best, not just what is cheapest.
And I think, I wanna hear from some other people, too. I think probably what Damon just said leads to the fact of what we build, which leads back to how we choose the site. But a lot of what we're trying to do tonight, too, to bring us back into focus, is seeing if, you know, we as a board anyway, can come up with enough, you know, do we feel confident enough to, to choose this as what we consider to be the focus site? So I'm gonna try to continue to push in that direction, at least for this board, to see how we do. Is there anyone else out in the audience that would like that? Marshall and, yeah?
Yeah.
Marshall Jespersen, I'm on, on FinCom and on the Capital Planning Committee as well. And there are, I've gone through, in, in my business, a number of builds and a number of renovations. And one of the things that is a significant item in operations is if you are building on a site and working on the site. So, for instance, if you have to move out, move somewhere, move all of your operations, it causes a disruption in operations, and in some cases, some things that you cannot do while you're building, and then moving back in to an operation. It's a, a double move that, that causes a, a lot of extra work, and, and usually the cessation of some of the things that you've done, done. We've done three renovation, no, we've done two renovations and three new builds. And I have to tell you, when, if you do a new build and you get everything right, then moving into that versus moving... moving into that versus moving twice is a huge advantage, and you can build a planning into it going on. So it's one of the factors that I think should be considered in, in site selection. And that if you do a, say, you, you choose this site, or we choose this site, and say the, the choice is to make this the site, then the planning that we've had to do in, in moving operations is a multi-month, very involved plan, and you have to decide what the voters are and are not going to get for services in the interim period while you're doing what would essentially be a new build here. You know, it's gonna be a new build somewhere. And so that, that operational part, I think, is, is really an important part to consider, and I would, it, it adds to the complexity, but this is not going to be an easy operation because you wanna keep running the town and do the changes at the same time. So two moves is gonna be considerably harder than just doing one. So I just wanted to put that in there for you.
Thanks.
Gene, Frank, anything?
Well, I would endorse the idea of an option B. I think it's important. And now that we've got two options that are plausible right now without further study, we don't know exactly what the answer would, would be. But I think we all agreed at the last meeting that this site probably, just given the parameters of the other possibilities, is probably the best site. And I will agree with what Marshall said. I was with a company in Boston, smallish company, that was split up at one point by our parent, well, state insurance company that liked the real estate better than they did our company. But in any case, that split caused us to fracture half the company and scatter them across the back bay, and it changed the company, the culture of the company, it split the company, and it changed it completely, and we ended up selling the company as a result of that. Those kinds of moves can have a major effect, even though it's just geographic and you think it shouldn't, it does. And I like the idea of the center of gravity here and the idea of combining major town services. I guess the only question I might have for Tracy, who's done some negotiation with the Newbury Port Water and Sewer, would that change the equation with water and sewer? Could we still have sewer to the police station? And maybe even the fire station if we're gonna span, span the fire station? Or would that, would that?
That's not a negotiation that's occurred to date.
Okay.
And to finish out, I know what Tracy's gonna say, and that negotiation can't start till we have a firm commitment.
A site.
Right, right. And the other thing we have to understand is that these improvements to the sewer system here have to be done regardless of where the site is. So that's a savings, you know, regardless, we can't consider it part of the cost here because it's gonna be done whether, whether we do it or not. And it would have to be, fortunately, actually, it would change the, it would change the, the calculus for the other sites as well.
Right. We certainly, and Eric's gonna get up to speak now, we've certainly had some deep insight from people that have had different types of experiences. So if anyone else, I mean, I'm looking still at Mike and Richard out there, and Linda, and Linda's been in business a long time, and Kathleen's now in, so, in the engineering part, so if anyone cares to speak after Eric, too, you know, it would be good. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the negotiations with the Newbury Port Water and Sewer for extending lines to private entities might be a non-starter. Selling this site and having the water sewer hook up here and paying money for it and then moving elsewhere, they could stop the service to here. You know, there are, we're just gonna get deeper into issues of, of thinking about them. And I also say, in, in terms of, of cost, and it seems, I think what, maybe you didn't say it, but to me, you know, it, this has been going on, and every meeting and every presentation I make, I start to say that, you know, this issue was brought up in 2004, and here we are, 2014, and we're, we're getting somewhere and we're getting closer, and, and we need to keep moving forward and not backwards and not sideways. If we were going out tomorrow with a bid for seven million, it would never be more economical to get bonds than right now. Next year, interest rates are gonna go up, bond rates are gonna go up, and the more we defer, and the more we defer, the more, it could seem less in terms of a total number, but it's gonna cost everybody more. So I don't want my taxes to go up, and I don't wanna pay a premium, but I don't wanna be paying extra and extra because we just decided to kick this can another couple of years down the road. And even now with the issues that we have, it's still not until 2018 somewhere that we're gonna actually realize to have a facility with all the work that needs to get done. I have fourteen months of construction, probably be done in twelve, but, you know, if you gotta demolish and get somebody started. I've put fourteen months of construction in, and I've also then, in terms of the options that I have, I've said there's X amount right now for the Town Hall to move out and move back in. If you built the Town Hall somewhere else, the police station somewhere else, they would only have to move once, so I cut that in half. So I, you know, do I have the right number? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but have I allotted for the fact of moving twice, moving once? I have that in my number.
John, and Kathleen, and Martha, your board was probably the only board to take a vote on the site that you preferred, right?
Right.
And can you kind of elaborate on those reasons? John spoke of these reasons at the meeting at the library when we really didn't have clear clarity in the voice and, and the sound was, so once again, we'll hear it from John.
John Weiss, Planning Board. So we, as a board, had gone over all the various kinds of sites and criteria and came to the conclusion that keeping the two functions together, the governance and the policing function, made an awful lot of sense, and we talked about that at the last, last meeting. We also talked about the historical nature of having the seat of government here, beginning years and years ago when they had it and, when the church and the town meeting place were the same place. But I'm very, very encouraged by this new information and would encourage Tracy and you to start the negotiations quickly. I think it, it opens up so many options that weren't here when it was just a relatively constrained site, and even with that constraint, we liked this site. So with the option of looking at how that property might be developed, and I don't wanna prejudge that because I think that's Eric's job to do that, but putting in, at least the police station down there and then seeing what happens here and really still then looking at, at this property and wish fresh light and addressing the concerns that people will have about, but this property does need to be upgraded. It simply has to be upgraded. So we firmly, now, we have not met since this new information came out, so I'm now giving you my opinion, but I'm looking around and I'm, I'm thinking that people are kind of agreeing with me and that, so we really applaud this, and we think this is a great opportunity to move forward. Any?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please.
Nick Oram, I live on Green Street and I'm on the Capital Planning Committee. So if my math is right, the building cost is about five hundred dollars a square foot? Is that?
Well, calculated for the construction cost to be about four.
And I, I don't know a whole lot about commercial building or municipal buildings. Is that a reasonable number?
Yes, we have a comparison, as part of the presentations that were made, we have a comparison from the CSS Architects that has done the plan. These are 2008 numbers, so there has been a little bit of inflation on them, but these police stations that have been built, have been built for.
Eric, come in.
These police stations, and there's maybe ten of them, have been built for about three fifty to four fifty a station. And if you take the information that was just published for the Salisbury Police Station, theirs is bigger, but they have twice as many officers. Theirs comes out to about four eighty a square foot. So the police station will have slightly above normal costs. The Town Hall should have standard commercial rate costs, it's office building, but the police station has some holding cells and they have some requirements that are, are gonna add to the square foot cost.
Thank you. Thanks, Mick, thanks. Is there anyone else present tonight that would like to speak?
I just.
Marshall?
Marshall Justperson, again. Just one thing I'd like to, I think, put into this whole calculus and perspective. And, and I think Fred brought up the, the idea of costs, and that's one that we're all sensitive to. But there is a cost of continuing without action that I think the townspeople have to realize, that in the long run, what we're doing is both responsible and is going to be cost-effective compared to not taking any action at all. And so when you look at all of the possibilities that we have before us, we have to choose one that is, one, going to serve the town and serve them at the best cost, and they have to know that we have costs now that will continue or escalate, especially if we have problems in the facility and non-compliance issues. And so those liabilities and those, those perhaps hidden or unanticipated costs, we hope they don't happen, could be things that, that make what we're doing pale in comparison. So, thank you.
Previously presented were costs to date of eighty thousand dollars for septic system overflows, the patch and repair, new floors. Is it leaking tonight down there?
It looks like it did.
Yeah, so the building is also leaking through the foundation, through the window wells, and as we held, it was before the October twenty-eighth meeting, but we were here in Town Hall, and you can see the, the tiles and the roof right here. It was the morning, first, first rainy, it was a rainy morning storm, but the Town Hall roof was leaking. Those have, and there were people going up through the stairs to try to figure out how to plug those holes. So if we spent, and that money wasn't like allocated in a lump sum like we need to spend it here, it's being taken away from other item and other needs and services in order to do that, to keep the police station open. So, and I would assume that number, if the septic system goes to a sewer system and is fixed, would be reduced, but there's still leakage and there's still flooding and there's still, will still be costs of money that's being thrown away for things that shouldn't be.
Erica, I know you want to speak. Listening to what Eric just said at that point, and then obviously, which was articulated, I think, very, very well by Marshall, I think our board has to really internalize the things you're hearing because what we're gonna maybe get asked to do if we think we can do it is choose a site tonight so that at least the procedures will go forward, so that Town Meeting at least has the ability to have some engineering performed so they can make some decisions in the future because of the dire conditions of which the police station is in at this point. So, you know, let's see, make sure that we're really focusing on what's going on. And Gene, go ahead, or Erica, or whoever first.
Gene K, so I'm on the Finance Committee. It seems to me, I'm just listening, I wasn't here at the last meeting, that in a sense you've eliminated two options, but you've added an option. Because you have the option of doing, I don't know what it is, use this site. The second option you have is to build a police station adjacent to the fire department and renovate this site. I think those are the two options. The site, it seemed to me at the last meeting, if I recall correctly from listening to folks, the consensus was that this is the place that everything ought to be, and I keep hearing that again and again. So there are two options to consider, and I think that both of those options can be considered expeditiously by the Municipal Planning Committee so that I think the decision on site is pretty clear. And I think we ought to do that so that folks can move forward knowing at least what that plan is, and they can do the work that they need to do before Town Meeting.
Erica, before, Erica was behind you, Fred, in the first, Frank.
Hi, Erica Jacobson, Finance Committee, live on Scotland Road. Gene said it perfectly. I really think that the idea of having the two sites that we're looking at be either this square footage, this building here, or this plus a parcel of land up for, still up for discussion with the fire company, not knowing that that would be a solid plan, but being able to go forth with that would be the best. The other thing that I really urge everyone in this room to do, and anyone who's watching this on YouTube or on the television station, is I don't, I hate hearing, there's scuttle in Byfield, or people in Byfield wanna know why. If they wanna know why, please come to one of these meetings, come to one of the workshops, make your voice heard, come and spend your hour. It's a cold rainy night, I didn't wanna go out, none of us wanted to go out, but it's important, and I will do everything on my part to educate the people around me, and I think that we can all think creatively as to how do we communicate this so that people know that this was done with all of the proper due diligence, that we aren't trying to put in front of the voters any lavish plans, and we're not trying to say, stare away from the cheapest alternative. We are trying to look at all of the pieces and that it really has been looked at, but we need to move forward. And we can't think the worst of what people are doing in these meetings. We are all here doing our best. And I think the, the work that the committee's done has been amazing, and I feel very confident saying I stand behind what you guys are doing, and I think we've got a great plan. And I think it's time to move on and make that something that really, then we can put it in front of the voters. If they don't want it, we have another bridge.
So then, the Municipal Building Committee meets at seven AM at a convenience for me because I have to make it to Cambridge and it's a hell commute anyway, but we did have one evening meeting. You know, my name, my email, the Municipal Building Committee has a separate email, it's on the town website, and you go to Departments, go to the Municipal Building Committee. If you email me, I'll gladly make time, however I can, to speak to anybody, one-on-one, or if, if some people wanna get together and you can get some Byfield residents and they wanna come and they wanna have an evening meeting, then suggest a time and a date and we'll, we'll try to make that happen. I'm more than willing to do whatever it takes to inform the residents.
Frank, did you have one last word?
Yeah. One. Frank Remley, Chair of the Finance Committee, sixteen old farmway. I would be remiss, as Chair of the Finance Committee, if I didn't look at this as a pro forma in the future where we wanna talk about cost. It's not just the lump sum cost, it's the cost that we're gonna pay over a period of time. Thirty to fifty years is gonna be the life of this facility. The bond may be fifteen, twenty years, probably twenty years. The interest rates between now and next year, I don't know if there's anybody in this room could dispute that they aren't gonna go up. Every interest, every point in the interest rate may cost us a lot more than we're talking about here tonight. So we got, we have a window of opportunity right now to do this and, and take care of the future for police and, and Town Hall for thirty to fifty years, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't do something and make our recommendations come the spring. And part of that is what's the impact gonna be on the tax rate? And I think we all know that our debt service has been going down. It may not be that much different as we look ahead. We lose a lot of debt service next year as a role of paying off the school and some other things that are gonna disappear fairly soon. So it's gonna be up to Tracy to show us that and, and work with our, our bond counsel and get us some estimates on just what, what the spreadsheet's gonna look like.
Thank you, Frank. We have heard from some of the people that know the most and have been the closest to this project, and I think in a very, very unbiased fashion have, you know, distilled a lot of the things that we might have needed to reinforce if we have the ability to make a, a decision tonight, and certainly. And certainly, the email from Protection Two, if we look at this, would make this expanded site, whether it's expanded or consolidated, it makes it even a different or more attractive choice. So I'm going to ask the board, and we can still discuss, can the board make a motion?
Eric. This particular building is known in yours as Option B.
This is Option A.
This is Option A.
This is now Option A. Governors is Option B, and Route 1 North is Option C.
Yeah, and remember, the motion in some respects, I think, is for not making a choice in how we do it, but really for the site of where we do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, do the Municipal Building Committee's Option A for a site.
I'll second.
And, and Option A is this site without determining how we do it.
The Municipal Building Committee would request that the Board of Selectmen do it in the reverse. Instead of a positive fashion, I'll be the negative fashion, eliminate the governors and the Route 1 North as site options. That leaves Option A here and/or there.
All right, how's that for a motion that makes it easier?
Well, he had to remove his motion.
All right, you're right. So, any discussion?
I'm removing the option?
No, we'll probably vote it or vote to amend it.
Okay, I'll move to amend.
Is that protocol?
Yes.
Are we out of movement?
All right.
To eliminate sites at GTA and Route 1 North.
Now, that is so crystal clear. All right, so that being said, that is amended to go toward the negative way of looking at it and dismissing the other two sites. So is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think the JR&amp;M site is a better site for the town long-term. But given the collective opinion here, I'm happy to move forward with this site as the only site.
I agree with you. I personally thought that Option D was the way to go, but with the vote of the Planning Board, the Finance Committee and all of that, I've changed my ideas also and moved to here, so.
And, and some of that being the work that they've done on running some of the utilities and other things to that site is, you know, a determining factor. So, that being, that being said, are those in favor of what the motion was? Go ahead.
I, I'm in favor.
So, we come out with this site, so.
Come out with this site. Poor Ellen.
I got it.
We have some communications left that I have to go through, but I appreciate everyone's input tonight, it's been spectacular. And I have to say, we're moving forward. Thank you, thank you, Eric, thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks. Yeah.
Take five while everyone clears the room.
Chuck, may I have a lifesaver?
Castle, whoa. That's a very good idea.
Hand up and stretch.
My legs are cramping up, I was down on my haunches all day.
At least you can still do it.
Are we ready to go back?
Okay, do me a favor, folks, if you can kind of filter out a little bit, we're going to start into the very last part, and it includes correspondence. We have a letter from Comcast. The letter of Comcast is to inform us
Nice barn.
That they, they are pleased to announce that we will, or they will, continue to provide high-speed internet service to the town of Newbury schools and local libraries free of charge again this year. Thanks again, everyone. So once again, Comcast is supplying service to the Newbury schools and library free of charge again this year. They also are launching their Internet Essentials program that they did in 2011, a program which provides families with children who are eligible to receive free and reduced lunches under the National School Lunch Program with low-cost internet service, affordable computers and digital literacy training. So that's a really another good service that they are providing for our town. One of the other communications that are very close to at least my heart, and I think it's a nice ritual to begin, and I think maybe we could have it moved to other towns. I was lucky enough to have two sons that decided they wanted to be involved in Cub Scouting and Boy Scouting, and they happened to see it all the way through. And as a result, I was the big hunter and sportsman that went to the first winter camp out and absolutely froze because I wasn't prepared like my Boy Scouts were. I ended up becoming an Assistant Scout Master, and Joshua and Nathan moved on to become Eagle Scouts. And I got to tell you, anyone that can take that journey, anyone that can take that journey as a family, if your children decide to take that journey, it's going to be one of the best journeys you ever take too. And it is somewhat different than just being involved in team sports and, and going to those type of events. It really is all encompassing. So George Pasenka, who is an old friend of mine, who has remained in scouting for as long as I can ever remember, if he's not still in charge, he's certainly totally affiliated, he is Scout Master, I read on the bond, has sent us a letter, and it comes from the Raleigh Yankee Clipper Council. Dear friend and scouting Boy Scout troop number 15 of Raleigh, Massachusetts, is proud to announce that Joshua Ian Terry has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout as of June 9th, 2014. I understand that you have responded in the past to such achievements through some form of recognition. Any communication from you would be presented at his Eagle Scout ceremony. I would appreciate any action on your part in showing support for this young man. Please send correspondence to, to George. Now, that being said, we drafted this note, and I think it would be nice to continue this for as long as our surrounding towns have the achievement of Eagle Scouts, including our own town and our own troop. So we sent, as Jeff Walker, Chair, Newbury Board of Selectmen, we spent, we sent, Dear Joshua, on behalf of the Newbury Board of Selectmen and the Town of Newbury, I would like to congratulate you upon your achievement in attaining the honor and the high honor of Eagle Scout. Become an Eagle Scout is an outstanding achievement that reflects your hard work and dedication. Your accomplishment serves an example of excellence and a source of pride for your community. Best wishes to you, your continued success in school scouting and all your endeavors. It is young people like you who make the future promising for our country. So well-written, Ellen, and, and it just is, it's significant, I think, for our town to, to honor another achievement for another town for an Eagle Scout. You know, if George is doing once, George is doing it twice. We have another Eagle Scout from his same Raleigh Yankee Clipper Council. So, and this young scout basically has this, is proud to achieve and announced that Eric Hoy, wow, who can do that one?
Nintala.
Nintala, has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout as of August 21st, 2014. I understand that you have responded in the past such as what, and what we wrote was exactly the same thing to, to Eric. On behalf of the Newbury Board of Selectmen, Town of Newbury, I would like to congratulate you. So, you know what, it's quite an achievement to, to reach Eagle Scout. I mean, you think of the astronauts and the generals and some of the people that have been Eagle Scouts, so, and I think I made first class, but I certainly appreciate the, the gentlemen that make it to Eagle. So, that being said, we have the minutes, review of the minutes, so.
Motion.
Everyone, yep, has everyone read the minutes? And the people that were here, it's Chuck here and Mike's not here and Damon, so, and I was here, so, Damon.
Motion to approve as written?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Uh, okay.
So, if I read this correctly, have we reached the crowning moment?
Warrants to be signed.
Oh, warrants.
And then updates.
Yep, meeting updates, any?
Yes, so I've been pursuing the idea of a memorial for David Mountain. Through that pursuit, we've come up with a number of different trails in town that might be appropriate. And also, the idea has been floated a number of times with the property at Larkin Road.
You mean the dam?
The dam, although Doug has some considerable concerns about that because he feels that if that dam fails, that property will change. And he's also not sure about the, whether or not the town wants to continue to own that long-term. So I've been pursuing things, talking things over with Martha. Wasn't sure when an appropriate time to talk to Barbara might be, his wife, because I don't want to sort of rub salt in what's probably a very fresh wound, but I think she should probably be involved a little bit in the memorial process. So we've looked at the Caldwell Farm development, which is going to have a trail as one of the options. There's another trail off, or potential trail off of Highfields Road. And I'm still talking to people in town about other options and thoughts, so I just wanted to bring that forward, let you know where things were at.
Damon, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Maybe as we really have a more precise location that seems to have undergone the scrutiny of maybe even acceptance and ability to, to go forward with the actual, you know, site application, then maybe we should move forward and really ask, you know, give them a few more weeks.
Really talk about it.
And I, and I have no idea, maybe we'll ask someone that we know that, that's close to David's family, you know, to go over. Martha, you, were you close to, did you know David's wife or anything? All right, I mean, we'll, we'll work forward, nail it up a little bit and then we'll go over and talk to the family, all right? Chuck, any meeting updates for you?
Just the Municipal Building Committee, and we resolved that tonight, so.
So I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, that motion.
Do we have any discussion?
No.
Oh, jeez, I don't want to.
Want to stay here for another hour.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks.